We resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a budget hearing on December 19th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, City of Fulton, New York, on the second floor, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, regarding the City of Fulton 2003 budget.
What was the date, Joe?
Nineteenth. It's gonna be a Thursday night.
December 19th.
Yes, December 19th. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the common council, in accordance with provisions of Title II, Section C-12 of the Charter of the City of Fulton, had a meeting held on November 21st, 2000, did fix and determine the salaries for the mayor and the alderman for the years 2001 through 2003 by resolution, whereas said resolution number 23-12-2000 provides for an increase in the salaries of the mayor and the alderman effective January 1st, 2003, whereas the city has been notified to expect a substantial increase in the required contribution to the New York State and local employees' retirement system during 2003 due to the condition of the stock market. Resolve that the salary increases for the mayor and the alderman scheduled for implementation January 1, 2003 be postponed until January 1, 2004 to contribute to the city's effort to reduce expenditures during the time of financial uncertainty in our national economy.
I'll move that.
Second.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move this, if I may. When I discussed this with the aldermen, we also talked about increasing the co-pay for the medical insurance, and I thought there was agreement on that, to increase it from 10% to 20%.
There is no prior common council resolution, as far as I know, doing that, so that would be a separate resolution.
You wanted to do a separate resolution rather than add it to this?
Well, this one is covered by a resolution.
Alright.
The other is not.
Was that going to be done this evening or at some other point?
Didn't you want to find out if there was a resolution in the past, maybe three, four years ago, that set that, so we could change it officially?
Yeah, as far as I know, there's not a resolution, but we can research, and if that is the case, put it on for the next meeting.
Alright.
But this one, I know, was covered by a resolution. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the right-of-way request submitted by Deborah Smith, 10 North 4th Street, the purpose of establishing this second driveway for tenant parking be referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for their review.
All in for that, Your Honor?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Notation that the reappointments by Mayor Stafford of Perry Man, 904 County Route 14, Fulton, New York, Gary Standard, 383 Baldwin Road, Fulton, New York, and Burdette Beals, 22 Salloway Drive, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Electrical Board, effective December 6, 2002, and to expire December 5, 2005, are hereby entered into the minutes of this common council meeting of December 3, 2002, as a matter of record.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give your name and address and...
My name is Teresa Shalom, and I live at 217 Rochester Street in the Fifth Ward. I addressed the council several months ago regarding the deplorable property located on the corner of Rochester and Third Street. I just wanted to take a moment to personally thank you, Alderman Thompson, City Attorney Hawthorne, and Mayor Stafford, for the continuous efforts you all have made to finally get this property improved. It has taken almost a year, but there is a new landlord who has made major enhancements to the building and property. He has kept the yard clean and free of debris, and now has responsible tenants. In fact, I would like his name and address, so I could send him a thank-you note from the neighbors.
His name is Wayne Harney?
I'll get it.
Okay.
I apologize for waiting until now to thank you all, but I wanted to see if the new landlord was going to continue with the improvements, and he has. Also this year, a vacant house directly across from my house is being renovated, and the duplex next to that house, the landlords have replaced the roof, cleaned up, and cleaned up the yard. This has made an all-around transformation to the block. I would just like to add that during this past year, I have needed assistance and had contact with several of the city's departments, police, animal control, city clerk's office, water, and DPW departments, and every time I called, everyone was very professional, extremely courteous, and did whatever they could to help me. In these hard times, with so many corporations downsizing, fiscal uncertainties, and international turmoil, we should not dwell on the negative, but the positive, and be grateful that we live in this beautiful city. I've had Fulton, New York, as my address for most of my life, and I feel very proud, as I know you are, to live here, to know the neighbors, city representatives, and workers. I wish you and your families a happy and joyous holiday season and very prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much.
You should be very proud.
I am, and again, I state how proud I am of the workforce that we have in the city. We are very fortunate to have the dedicated employees that we do, that day after day go beyond the call of duty to get the job done, and I'm glad to have you come forward and say this, because there's so many times that people find fault.
You don't hear. You don't hear. I had to do a picture for my father, and welcome his loss. He's rough, he's a wonderful, professional, very great.
It's good for us to hear it, it's better for the employees to hear it, and know that their jobs and the way they do their jobs are appreciated, and I thank you very much. Anyone else? And the council? First ward.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to ask you to have a resolution of respect for a former department head who recently passed away, Dan Vaughn, be prepared for our next common council meeting.
Very good, thank you.
That's tonight.
Second ward.
Oh, Your Honor, thank you.
Third ward.
This meeting has gone way too fast.
There we go.
No, I think what I want to do is, my thoughts are that tonight we set a budget hearing for the 19th. We still have the time from now until the 19th to hear from our citizens. We certainly have been hearing from them up to this point, and we certainly appreciate their comments. Certainly, the Valley News, the Patriot, the Fulton Daily News have been right on top of things with reporting what they've been hearing, and also getting the responses back from the alderman and the mayor. I'm just hoping right now if we could spend a few minutes with somewhat of a discussion on some of the things that we're hearing, and maybe we can answer some of those questions that they might want to answer now instead of waiting till a public hearing. Certainly, this has probably been the most difficult budget year that I've faced on my nine years on the council. Last year was difficult, this year is even more difficult, as everyone on the council knows, and the mayor. The things that we're hearing, of course, are related to the sales tax, relating to cut spending, reduce the fat. I think this is something that we try to do all year long, all the time with our departments. We try to be as efficient as possible, we try to get the job done efficiently and with the least amount of money expended, but it's become very difficult. As far as the workforce goes, and as far as the services go, I know the mayor's responded in the papers and on the radio, and he has said repeatedly, is what don't you want? What services don't you want, when you start talking about cutting fat and reducing spending? It's an easy thing to say, but very difficult to do. I know in Oswego, they have a budget that's almost three times what ours is, they have a workforce of 414, we have 170, and their population is only 50% more than ours. So, I think over the past year, when we reduced some of the employees, we made some cuts last year, it's something we don't want to do, but sometimes you're faced with those kind of difficult decisions. So, at this time, I would like to, if I could, open it up to the rest of the alderman and the mayor, with any comments they might have relating to the sales tax, and how that came about, and what it means, as far as we're concerned, to our city. So, I'm opening it up to anyone that wants to comment.
If I may?
Please.
I appreciate Teresa Shalom's comments about not looking at the negative and the doom-and-gloom aspect, and I think we are looking at that too much. We're focusing on that too much. There is a bright side, but before I get to that, or hopefully present some bright side, there are some problems, and it's not just the City of Fulton that is experiencing the problems. It's been said for quite a while that one of the continuous problems is a decreasing tax base and increasing costs, so there's fewer dollars to be taxed in this city, property tax, and yet the costs keep going up. Our HMO Blue insurance rate was going to be going up $194,000 this year over last year. We've got a last-minute call, the mayor did, from the New York State Retirement System, that we would have to contribute a significant amount more this year than we have last year. State aid per capita, we don't know for next year what it's going to be. And the reason that is probably, if many of you, I'm sure, listen to the national news, at least what I've heard on public radio, just about every state in the country is looking at approximately $2 to $3 billion in deficit next year, and the main reasons are Medicaid costs, the falling market slash economy, and insurance. And that's hit every state and every municipality within those states. Our property tax structure is regressive and outdated, and I think that the New York State Conference of Mayors, which our mayor belongs to, and our city is a member of, has been wrestling with this problem for the last 10 years that I know of. Everyone is not paying their fair share. There are too many exemptions for the services that are being provided, so fewer and fewer people are paying for those services. If there were a way to charge across the board 100%, our taxes individually would go down substantially, but I guess that's gonna have to be continued to work on. Some of the good spots. As chairman of the insurance committee, I suggested, and the committee agreed, to request quotes on all of our insurances. Life and disability was the first quote we went out for, and we achieved a savings of $15,000. We also went out for a quote on our liability insurance. Those were due in today, and the insurance committee will be meeting Thursday. Is that correct, Joe? Thursday this week? The insurance committee will be meeting?
Yes.
To look at the quotes and discuss the options that have been presented. The medical insurance, there was going to be a substantial increase, as I mentioned, in the HMO Blue, but our present self-insured program administrator had merged with a company called MVP. Some of you may have heard it, they've been advertising on TV. As a result of that, we were able to achieve a savings of $167,000 if the unions agreed. And I thank all the unions, that we got word yesterday that they all did agree to change from the HMO Blue to this new self-insured HMO program. That's a significant savings. I suggested, and the council agreed, that we not have the wage increase, and you heard the resolution pass tonight, and I'm hoping we will further pass the increase to the premiums of the medical insurance by the aldermen. There's only four of us that have it, from 10% to 20%. It's not big money, but it helps. We also suggested that the mayor request that the department heads consider voluntary wage freeze for this year. We haven't heard the results of that yet. The mayor and the aldermen also agreed to request that the department heads also pay the increase in the cost of the insurance from 10% to 20%. We're still waiting to hear from them on that. And there's a couple other things that are on the table that are probably not appropriate to discuss yet, but some other items that are being pursued, and hopefully will be I think we also need to, though, appeal to our community. We need more involvement from the people in the community to help keep the cost down. I'm just gonna give you two simple examples. After the plowing season, those areas that don't have curbing have their lawns torn up a bit. Can't avoid it. But rather than ask the city to come and throw more topsoil on your lawn and cede it, it would be nice if the citizens took it upon themselves to take care of that. That would help cut costs. Yard waste pickup. Originally, when the plane was devised, we said we would pick up yard waste from April through May continuously, and also from October to the first snow, but during June through September, we would do it by quads, because it would be a little more efficient, rather than having several trucks roam around the city picking this stuff up. Save fuel and manpower. I think we kind of got away from it, I'd like to see us go back to it. People are gonna have to be a little bit more patient, perhaps, during the summer months, about to pick up the yard waste, but there is a cost advantage by doing so. We have an item in our budget called celebrations. There's about 15, 20 items, amounts to about $44,000. I would love to see donations for that made by some of the businesses, perhaps, some of the people that are tax-exempt, or they're not paying property tax, and also not-for-profits, to come forward and contribute toward that particular item in the budget. Again, only a small percentage of people are taxed or paying for it, but everybody gets the benefit of it, like the Memorial Day Parade, et cetera. There's been some articles in the paper about policemen cutting firemen, et cetera, and those contracts are three years in length, and they're not gonna be able to be negotiated for next year. And I'm not talking necessarily about cuts, but there's nothing we can do about that this year. Next year, hopefully, we can discuss things with the union and seek some kind of cooperative effort toward a common goal in help reduce costs in our city. Sales tax. I'm reluctant, and have been reluctant, about the sales tax. It could hurt more than it could help. But on the other hand, I do see it as a broader-based tax. Everybody will be paying for it, not just the property owners. And I see it, I guess, as the lesser of two evils. Finally, I'd just like to make two recommendations or proposals to the council. One is, since we've set the meeting, I would like to suggest to the council tonight, get approval, that we set a meeting for this Friday, preferably around 2:00, to convene and review the budget and other possible budget cuts. The reason I'm suggesting that timeframe is that if necessary, to call in any of the department heads, they'll still be here, hopefully, or we could ask the mayor, ask them to be around if we need to call them in. Is there a consensus from the council to do so?
2:00 on Friday? Can you be here 2:00 on Friday?
I can work into the schedule of work.
Okay.
Check at work tomorrow, but I don't see it as a problem.
Okay, Alden Sahaski?
No.
You won't be able to be here. Alden Weston?
I can work things out.
Okay.
I can be here. Nah, I'm working 2 to 10. I'm playing hooky hat tonight, tonight to be here tonight.
I won't know till tomorrow. I mean, I've gotta check my dates ever.
Okay.
Is there another better time or better day?
For me?
For all of us?
I was gonna suggest a Saturday, but...
I'm pretty flexible, but, you know, I generally don't make my schedule without looking at my schedule.
Saturdays I work, I'm tied up, but any other time is fine by me.
I mean, I know I've got things Friday morning, I don't know what I have Friday afternoon, so I won't know until I get to the office and look. I mean, that's, I just don't know.
I just think it's important, if all of us can't be there, well, it's not, we're only talking about maybe half, no, three out of six.
You know, six, all six of us should be there aligned with the mayor and the corporation council.
The only problem is time's getting short, and if there's going to be any further discussion of cuts, and then perhaps further investigation of that, of those that might be proposed, isn't gonna leave us a lot of time. Do you think? Could we make it the following week?
If you, we can recess for just a moment, I'll go get the schedule of what we've got going on officially for next week.
Are you in your alderment?
Yes.
Are you in practice?
Yeah.
This is your night week, right?
Yeah, every Friday. Cat's clear, right? Cat's clean.
Yeah, cats, yes.
All the rest of the weeks, huh?
No, only on the 19th, the budget has to be...
I took a personal afternoon day tonight.
Should be available for the...
I'd be pretty hard, 'cause I see, when I'm on days...
I was against...
And everything like that.
I can't, it's a delay, there's much more.
And of course, we always amend the budget, even after...
You can't, you can't add to a circular...
Every week, every day.
Right.
You're never, I mean, say you piss the sales tax off, you're never gonna be guaranteed on what the county might do in the cities.
Next Monday, anytime after 4:00 would work.
What day was that?
Monday, anytime after 4:00.
That's a better time for me.
Tuesday?
Tuesday, we have a 4:30.
We have a 4:30 meeting, if you wanted to do something after that.
Tuesday would be better for me. On Monday now, I'd be out of town.
Monday you will?
Tuesday, actually, before 4:30 is better than after for me. That I know.
Are you gonna be here to...
Well, you know, like I say, I can't really make a schedule until I see my schedule. I mean, I can work around it, so...
I'm all set after this, we're fine for the next four weeks, I'm on days.
Okay. Or Thursday is...
It's the 12th.
Open in the afternoon.
That's the day it has to be ready for the public, Joe. The budget...
Now, we're getting close to the time when Joe needs...
You have to have the budget available for public inspection one week prior to the hearing.
One week prior.
So, that would be the 12th. So, it has to be, it has to be ready by the 12th, if we're gonna have the budget hearing on the 19th.
That's why I suggested Friday, if then we need to further, if we come up with anything, and I have some suggestions...
Why don't we meet Saturday? Saturday afternoon?
Yeah, Saturday afternoon, after 2:00 is fine.
I can remember meeting Saturday, Sunday, right up till Christmas Eve before.
Yeah, I can do that.
Do you wanna meet at 2:30 on Saturday?
If we did that, Your Honor, then if we needed department heads, we could schedule them for next week, when it's appropriate for all of us here.
Okay.
And if the whole entire council is here to decide if they wanna remove something from the budget, I don't think you need all six people, if you need to talk to department heads, as long as there's a consensus of where we're going.
So, we're talking...
2:30?
A budget meeting at 2:30?
Yep.
On Saturday, okay?
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday.
The 7th?
Yep.
Okay.
You're thinking?
I won't, I don't know, I won't know no more.
Fifth ward.
Pardon?
Do you have anything?
Want to ask him if he's done yet?
Oh, I thought he was, I thought he was done.
I have two proposals. The other proposal, and I'd like to consider it this evening, but if you wanna think about it, we could perhaps put it on the next meeting agenda. I'd like for us to consider the formation of an advisory committee of seven to nine people, approximately, a bipartisan group, a cross-section of the community, because I believe there's a lot of good resource people out there that could help us during the course of our investigation of other potential cuts during the course of next year, and perhaps develop some short-term and long-term goals. Basically, that's it. I'd like to see us think about an advisory committee. Each alderman could submit a name or two, and then as a group, we could discuss those individuals, and go from there.
We'll put a boilerplate resolution together for next meeting, and we'll get it...
You want me to do that? Or you, you want me to do that?
You'd get it to me, and we'll get it on the agenda.
We did this type of thing with the garbage program, it worked very well. We got one person from each ward, wasn't it?
That was a citizen committee.
Citizen committee.
One citizen committee, each ward, and yes, it did.
That's really the way we formed the other requirements that we put forth on the garbage program that we started seven years ago.
Yep. Alright, I'll get that to you.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Fifth ward.
No, thank you.
Sixth ward.
No, Your Honor, the only thing I'd like to say is, I used to read all the comments in the paper, and I probably should do it now, but I'd rather have the people come here and discuss it, you know, 'cause you can answer somebody that's sitting in front of you. They might not like the answers, or they might not even believe you, but at least you can talk to them. I don't read a lot of it, because I notice there's a lot of real good ideas and good well intentions, and some of it's not so good. I even wonder why, you know, when I know people sit on this council and suggest things that they know darn well we can't do, then I don't feel so bad for myself, because I feel worse for the public, because when they're misinformed, it's not good. It's really not good. And I'm not gonna get into names, it's not fair, and it's not, I just don't think that's the right thing to do, but if we look at our city, we know we need public safety. We might disagree on how much we need to pay for it, and a lot of suggestions out there on what we should do about it, but the suggestions that we need to hear is how to do it. You know, I've sat through a number of years on this council, and I don't ever remember the City of Fulton winning an arbitration in a laser fire contract, ever, but I do remember spending thousands of dollars to try to do it. I'm not sure what the answer is, other than dissolving the corporation, or starting over again, and that could happen too. I mean, if you really want to do that, we pay you half a million dollars a year to light the city streets, and we have to do it. We don't, we can't go to the people supplying our power and saying, geez, you better start reading these editorials, we're paying you too much, you better not get half. It doesn't work that way. We've debated a lot of years over whether or not we ought to pick up garbage in the city. Well, you know, we could stop that tomorrow. The only problem is, those guys that pick up garbage also operate the wings on the plows. Are we gonna stop plowing the streets? We can't. That's part of public safety. Probably, if we looked through the whole city, not in water and sewer, but in the general, we could probably go through City Hall and gut two or three... Well, you know, we could stop that tomorrow. The only problem is those guys that pick up garbage also operate the wings on the plows. Are we going to stop plowing the streets? We can't. That's part of public safety. Probably if we looked through the whole city, not in water and sewer, but in the general, we could probably go through City Hall and gut two or three more positions. I'm not sure what good that's going to do to people of Fulton. As far as sales tax go, nobody wants to pay sales tax. Nobody wants to pay property tax. Nobody wants to pay excise tax. But everybody wants the street plowed. Everybody wants the lights on. Everybody wants the police there when they call them. And everybody wants the fire department. And Joe said it's a lesser two evils. I am working at a plant that I'm, that's going to close. I'm going to lose my job. I pay taxes. But I want the streets plowed, and I want the police there if I need to have them there for my family and the fire department. And I think they do a real good job. Do I think that they get paid a little more than I'd like them to? Of course I do. My boss thinks the same thing about me. That's probably why he's closing. He thinks there's too many of us. But I've heard all the negative in, about Fulton being a welfare town, and I don't like that. I mean, it really cuts deep to me. Uh, maybe we have a little bit too much of one thing or another. Uh, nothing ever hits the metal, ever. It's either always one way or another. And I think that's because of people's opinions, but we're a city that cares about people. I mean, where would our country be if we yanked down the Statue of Liberty that said, send me your poor, your weak here?
A little bit.
Yeah. Is that what we're doing? Is that what we're talking about? So, if you're looking and, and gauge all these comments we get, then it, then you say to yourself, look, is it fair for half the people to pay, or should we come up with a way where everyone pays? And people that don't even live here. And I know, I mean, I've had some of my family members say, well, I'm not going to shop in Fulton if you, I have to pay another penny. And maybe they won't. But I can tell you right now, I don't think that will happen. Now, there may be something, once we do this, where we can say, well, we're going to do it on fast food, or we're going to do it on this or that, not automobiles or something that would really hurt people. But you'd find that a big portion of your sales tax comes from things like fast food. I'm not going to drag this to where we're going to save three cents, even if I do get even with the guy that ran against me. That's not very smart. It's not good for my family. It's not good for anyone else. So, we either want everybody to try to pay, or we want to gut the city and get rid of what we need to make it safe and comfortable. I don't think we want to do that. We've got tough decisions. I've also read the comments where some of us been here too long. Maybe that's true, you know? I know myself, I spent a lot of time here, and maybe my mind is getting a little closed. I don't know. But I think this is my last turn. We, but I could be willing to bet you that all the ones out there writing the negatives aren't going to be sitting here. They know better. They know better. With that, Your Honor, I think what we need to do is just keep doing what we've been doing. Everyone sitting on this council, including yourself and the city attorney, and all of our department heads are trying very hard to do what's best for this town. And I think we need to rise, rise above the, the criticism that's not so constructive and take our lumps where we need them, because we probably got some coming, you know? But I think we'll get through this. And that's all we can do, is the best we can do.
I'm going to tell you something, Ron. I don't think in the future I'm going to let you speak before I speak.
Very good, Ron.
Because just about everything that you've said, I totally agree with. I'm, if the people that wanted to write the negative letters into the paper, if they would come to these meetings and say something and ask some questions, we could give them the answers. But they like to write letters with innuendos that something unjust is being done. And nobody sitting on this council is looking to better themselves whatsoever. Everybody is trying to look for the benefit of this city. If we didn't care about the city, we wouldn't have gone out and run for office and told people that we're going to try to make it better. And it gets discouraging at times, and I think that's what people want, is they want the people that are taking the heat to get discouraged. And from time to time, I do. But I get through it. I get over it. Because like tonight, with Teresa coming forward and, and saying, this is what's happening. It's working. It's working. It doesn't happen overnight.
No, it doesn't.
Your Honor, how commendable and self-respect you have, to give up your racism. And, I mean, that's got to show the city, the people in the city that, my God. And that is, I, you never, you ought to tell your comrades and comrades in the county, they ought to think about that too. Because I've never heard, I, I, John, how long have I done in politics? For how long?
Quite a few years.
But then we could buy it, and you're away, so, so, uh, we'll keep that.
I have never, ever heard of legislators or councilor, anybody, ever giving up their rights.
But this, well, the, the county legislature has done this, and they've done it on occasion in the past, I don't know how many times, and, and that's neither here nor there. But they're, they're facing their dilemma, how they feel they need to do it. We have a dilemma we need to face. We are working to try to find how to cut costs. Some of the ideas that have come out in the paper, in, in, in letters and whatever, if people had come forward and asked, and some of the people that have made allegations know better. Yes, yes, we have minimum manning on both the police department and the fire department. Yes, we asked to have that removed from the contract at the last negotiations. It did not happen. Both police and fire in New York State are covered by binding arbitration. They were given that when the Taylor law was implemented to make sure that they were treated fairly by governments because they cannot strike. It has gone too far. It goes to an arbitrator. The arbitrator makes a decision on what is best for municipalities all over New York State. Most of the time, a lot of the time, the arbitrators lean toward the employees. There are things that have to change. This arbitration, the binding arbitration law is renewed every two or three years in Albany. We are looking to get that done away with, but we have to come up with something else. If these unions are prohibited from striking, they have to be given some insurance that for whatever reason, government can't just say no to their demands or their requests, and they have no recourse. There's got to be give and take on both sides. Some of the language that has gone into the contract has cost the city money. We need to work with the unions to remove this, to cut the cost as much as possible. It's got to happen. If not, we're headed for bankruptcy. There's no doubt about it. We cannot continue to give and give and give. It's nice to be able to provide your employees with a living wage. But there are some benefits that need to be adjusted, and we will work to do this. But we've got to work through contract negotiations to do this. Some of the people that have made comments know this, and they still make the comments. The, the minimum manning on the two departments wasn't put in yesterday. This is something we've been living with for years. We need to work on it, and we will continue to work on it. We will continue to negotiate. A lot of misinformation is put out in these letters, and I'm sure some people that read the letters believe it. If the people that wrote the letters would come to the meeting, then the truth could come out. But I think some that write the letters don't want the truth to come out. They want to slant everything. And I guess that's life. But one thing that I have found since I have been in this office, and I never thought about it much before I got in this office, is there is no longer a status quo. People talk about what Fulton used to be in the dizzy block and before urban renewal, and what they would like to have back. It's not going to come back, and you're not going to stay even. You're either moving forward, or you're falling behind, and that's the way it is. That's just become a fact of life. And what we have tried to do is move the city forward and provide a better quality of life for the people that live here. And we will continue to do this as long as I'm here. And it's not going to be easy. It wasn't an easy decision to come up with the idea of an additional sales tax. And people say it's going to hurt business. But think just a short time ago. The city of Oswego and the city of Fulton had a 3% sales tax. The county had none. The county's sales tax wasn't put in until just a few years ago. Were we prosperous? Were, was our retail doing business? It most certainly was. Now, we're not talking 3% now. We're talking 1%. And if you had any idea how many of the counties in New York State have gone to the 1% additional to a total of 8%, one of them is an adjoining county, Keoga County. Has had 8% for a while now. And I just heard on the television this morning, because of the budget crisis the county's in, their taxes are going to go up 16% countywide. And most of it is based on Medicaid payments for the counties. It's a problem. I've told a number of our county legislators that the county needed to take the sales tax up a percent. I've been told that if they did, it would bring in $5 million a year for them. They have opted not to do that. And we're talking about a double-digit tax increase countywide. Well, would it be double-digit if they increased the sales tax? Anadogah County had their first property tax increase in a number of years this year and did away with the DARA program in their schools to save money. With the amount of retail in Anadogah County, if they had gone up 1% in sales tax, especially with the plans that are being made for the Destiny Project and the amount of sales tax that's going to generate, I would think that they could probably almost do away with property tax in Anadogah County by people coming in from outside of the county to spend the money. And they're not going to stop because sales tax is up 1%. It's happening in counties all over New York State. Numbers, people like to play with numbers. Well, I can give you some numbers. Last year, the city of Fulton took in over $4.6 million in sales tax at 3%. Those numbers are out there. They're public knowledge. Anybody can get those. At 3%. If you work out the math on that, that means it was over $148 million in sales to generate that $4.6 million. Now, did the 11,855 residents of this city, according to the 2000 census, did they spend $148 million? Absolutely not. We got a lot of that from people coming through our city and stopping. And I know everybody plays down fast food and convenience stores and gas stations. But if you look at our retail base in this city, where did it come from if it wasn't from that? The 11,855 residents didn't generate the income of $148 million to spend. There's no doubt.
No, and that $148 million was only, that was spent on select taxed items. I mean, groceries and things like that aren't taxed.
A lot of, a lot of that isn't. So, we are drawing a lot of the income from outside of the city. And that's why we felt, and I feel personally, that a sales tax increase is a fairer tax because it spreads it out to not only city residents, but those that come in and make purchases in the city rather than just the property owners in our city. The property owners are taxed out. I know. I'm a property owner. I don't want a tax increase. I'm doing my best to make sure we don't have any, or if we have one, it's as small as possible to maintain the level of service we have right now. Because I personally think if we cut any more positions, we are not going to be able to provide the level of service that the residents enjoy right now. And it's not easy. This has been the most frustrating budget that I have worked on in the five that I have worked on. And they just keep getting tougher. And I... I'm not... I can't, I can't commend you enough for what you did tonight because you have given me a reason to put aside all the nonsense, all the negatives. I thank you so very much. I will do that. Thank you very much. Now, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, can I, I'm sorry, can I have just a couple more minutes?
Oh, God. I know I've started something up.
I can't thank the council, no, I can't thank the council and the mayor enough for this open discussion because this is the way we can communicate with the people. Now, I have a little different take than Ron and the mayor because the first thing I do when I get home is read what's, what I've seen on Fulton Daily News. I pick up the Valley News, the Patriot when I get home, the Pal Times. I want to know what the people in the city of Fulton are saying because this is the only way I can tell and try to make changes, try to make improvements. I realize what the mayor and Ron said is true, that there's some, some of these suggestions, the people that are making them already know that it can't be done. But there's a lot of people out there that want to be heard, and also the fact is there's some, a lot of people are hesitant to come to a meeting because they're just not, they're not public speakers. They don't want to be there. So, they, they communicate by way of, by letter form. So, and that's fine.
I get a lot of phone calls.
And I think we, and phone calls. Because I think that's what we, that's what we always want. So, this is the open discussion that I discussed months ago as a way of us getting our message out to the people by getting it into the press, by seeing it on TV. We never really know how many people are watching it on TV, but we hope that they're watching it and they can find out the information that they're looking for if they want it. It'll also be in the papers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, considering the circumstances that we're in, I think that your administration has done a very good job in curtailing expenses this year, um, outside the realm of contractual obligations that we have to fulfill. You know, I commend you and the department heads for doing that.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's important to mention too that the budget that we had this year, we're not over on our budgets. I mean, we're well within our constraints of the budget we set with our tax rate. That's not the problem. You know, we didn't overspend, uh...
But this, this current, this current weather condition can stop any time now, between now and the end of the year, and, you know, I think... now and the end of the year, and, uh, and I'll be very thankful.
Most people understand that they live in Fulton, I mean, last year was a fluke. We're going to get it.
Yes.
I make a motion adjourned executive session, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.